Has arrived for us to begin our Board of Supervisors meeting for tonight, May 10. Would everybody please rise for a moment of silence and then we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Next, do we have any conflict of interest disclosures? Any board members? Okay, thank you, so we'll move on. At this time, we will have a recognition that will be given by Ms. Crystal Baker and I'll ask Mr. Stanley to come down with me while the presentation is being made.
Okay, recognitions is an opportunity for the Board of Supervisors to recognize achievements in our community with a focus on the accomplishments of students, employees, and our citizen volunteers who serve the County of Prince Edward. We would like to recognize Prince Edward County's first Employee of the Month, Deputy James Taylor. Deputy Taylor managed the courthouse security screening point much of the time through the majority of the worst so far of the COVID pandemic. He greeted every person who walked into the courthouse with a good morning. He taught us that green is good. He managed in his calm, measured way all of the COVID-related changes and nuances that impacted entry to the courthouse and suggested improvements that may have gone unnoted. Deputy Taylor managed the flow of public during a difficult time with a positive attitude, and excellent customer service towards the employees, the public, and the job he was assigned. Deputy Taylor is an exemplary representative of the County of Prince Edward and the Prince Edward County Sheriff's Office. He serves the county and its citizens well and treats everyone with respect. Thank you, Deputy Taylor, for being a team player and a positive role model.
Take your masks off so we can see your face.
At this time, we have public participation. This is an opportunity for you as citizens to give input on relevant issues not subject of a public hearing and is not intended as a question-answer period. Mr. Stanley, do we have any to speak?
No, ma'am.
Okay, no one has signed up. Is anybody online interested in speaking? Okay, thank you so much. Next, we will have comments by Board of Supervisors. Ms. Patty Cooper-Jones?
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. It is indeed a pleasure to see you here, and I like the fact that you are participating in your county's business and what matters to you in your life. Thank you kindly.
Good evening, everyone. We thank you for being here and we hope you enjoy the evening.
Glad to see everyone tonight. Thank you, Governor.
I just want to say welcome and good to see you here tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate your comments and the input because it does make a difference on how we decide things.
I don't have any comments.
Thanks for being here. Once again, thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have the consent agenda. You've looked over it, any concerns or questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'd like to move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. There's a motion in second that we approve the consent agenda. Patty?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Odessa, yes, and it's been approved. At this time, we will have the Town Manager of Farmville update, Dr. C. Scott Davis, who is the Town Manager.
Dr. Pride, members of the board, Mr. Stanley, thank you for having me this evening. It's been a while since I've been here. Just to give you a little update from the town and what is transpiring and what is going to happen of some events for you all. We should have some paving to begin this month and finish by the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30. And we'll be doing mostly subdivisions. So it'll be Crestview subdivision, you'll see South, South Street, so y'all have when you're coming through South Street, Fourth Street, Longwood Avenue, Johnston Drive, Putney, Barber Street, all those streets in that area of town. It'll be about approximately $800,000 worth of paving, milling and paving. We are going to have fireworks for July, for July, celebrate July 4th, only it's going to be on July 2nd, and the fireworks will not be at the airport any longer, it's going to be in downtown Farmville. We will be shooting fireworks off the rooftop of Town Hall. The event will be from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. We'll have a lot of the things that you've had in the past at the airport, we'll have food vendors, we'll have actually teaming up with North Street Press Club where they're planning to have a beer garden and close North Street and have a band there, we'll have a band on Crute Stage, two bands on Crute Stage, and the fireworks will go off at sunset. The Heart of Virginia Festival is scheduled for September the 17th this year, and we will have, obviously that's not going to change, it's just changed from May to September, and hopefully we'll have a huge crowd since we haven't had that event in several years. The town has hired a finance director after a few years of searching. Ms. Julie Moore started working for the town on April the 25th. She comes to us from Brown Edwards and Company, which is an auditing firm. She's been in the business for over 20 years auditing municipal governments and the like. So we're happy and excited to have her onboard and her knowledge. Tomorrow night, we will be voting on our redistricting map and changing our ordinance based on the decennial census, and so that will be able to be available for the November election, which, as you know, has changed because traditionally the town has had May elections. Our budget, we will be having a public hearing tomorrow night on our '22, '23 fiscal year budget, some highlights. This budget will allow us to begin a combination fire department for the first time, and that means that we'll still depend strongly on our volunteers. However, over time, the goal is to begin building a professional career fire department to match all of our volunteers on the volunteer fire department. It'll actually create two positions, create one new position, a fire chief, and transfer a fire attendant that we have a classification for into a firefighter position. We're going to replace a lot of the needed equipment. We're going to have a new dump truck, a new sweeper bed on our sweeper truck. We are moving towards replacing police vehicles by doing a lease program through either Ford or the Virginia local government finance pool. And with that, we have figured that we'll be able to do five police cars a year, and at the end of five years, we'd be able to sell them for a higher price than we would keeping them for the long time that we traditionally have. We plan on funding one more year of the executive director position at $15,000. We had, as you remember, we had a joint meeting with board and the council at one time about three or four years ago, and we said that we would, in Longwood and Hampton, Sydney, would fund it for three years to get an executive director onboard, help them to get sustainable, and then we would reevaluate. That reevaluation is that we'll do one more year and reduce that cost of, from 30,000 to 15,000 for each. We are going to continue, though, to maintain their vehicles. I think if you ask the volunteer fire department, the turnaround time that they get for Prince Edward County Volunteer Fire Department compared to prior, I'm sorry, Rescue Squad, not Fire Department, the turnaround time that they get in maintenance with the town the last three years prior is, the turnaround is so much faster, within days instead of weeks, and saving them money as well because unless it costs for the year 20,000 to 30,000, and it's no cost to them, we eat that cost. And we will continue to provide fuel as we have for, way before my time here with the town. We are going to increase slightly water, sewer, and sanitation fees. The last time we increased water and sewer fees was in 2018, and the last time we did sanitation fees was when they initially, the council initially adopted it in 2012. The water will go up $1, and the refuge will go up $1, and sewer is based on water consumption, so it's 120% of your water. So in essence, if you want to say it's $1.20, then that's what it would be, but it's 120% of what your water is. And we also will be doing a pay increase for all of our employees. It will not be on a percentage basis, it will be on a monetary basis. During the year, we tried to fix some salary gaps in a few areas, public works and public safety, and with that, those that have gotten an increase in the middle of the year will get a $500 increase. The ones that have not gotten a raise in those two areas will get a $3,000 raise, and all others, as I call them, general government employees will get a $2,000 raise. As for ARPA, we are, the council has agreed on upgrades to our water and wastewater treatment plants. With the upgrades that are needed, it will take about almost approximately $3 million to do those upgrades with ARPA funds. And as far as the remaining funds, we're looking at other projects that we're considering, such as a splash pad, some other water and sewer line replacements, especially in the area of Oak Griffin and High, where the eventual roundabout that was funded by VDOT will occur. We want to make sure that's part of the oldest part of town, that some of those are still on cloth maps, that we want to make sure that there's actually there or not there at this point before we put in new roadways over top of that. And also looking at other recreational equipment in parks and some of our nonprofit requests. So thank you once again for allowing me to be here, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I don't have a question, but I do have a positive comment, and that is, I've heard a lot of positive about the repair situation that you're doing for the EMT and so forth, and I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I was there when that was put in, and it was a surprise at the time, but very pleasant.
Any other comments? Thank you. I'm sorry, Bob.
I noticed y'all are closing the golf course. Is that the whole facility, including the building itself that y'all used to lease out at times?
Right now, the goal is to rent out the banquet room and keep the area around the banquet room maintained.
Right.
But we would close functioning of the golf course as of June 30.
Right.
However, council has asked me to get that property appraised at its highest and best value, and if we have that completed and someone wants to purchase that land and incorporate the banquet room, depending on what that amount is, I'm sure that we would probably sell that at that point in time. We have about, from what we bought the golf course for, what renovations were put in it, such as cart paths, renovating in addition to the banquet room, and some other things, we probably have about 2.2 million in it, and we've never gotten anything out of it. We have been, it's never made a profit.
Right.
Or broken, or break even.
Yeah.
And so when you have to take general fund, the decision is because when you have to take general fund dollars every year to put towards that, when we could be doing other core services, is why I brought that to the council's attention.
Well, hopefully you'll find a buyer.
No, I hope so.
I'd really like to say, just like Jim did, just because I have been on P report, thank y'all for what you do, and you're exactly right, turnaround time has been tremendously different, and they're very grateful. Thank y'all for what you do, man.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Tonight, we are very honored to have the Executive Director of Crossroads with us, and I would like to introduce and present to you Dr. Melba Moore. Dr. Moore, would you like to stand and have a few words?
Thank you. Good evening, President, and good evening.
Good evening.
Council, Board of Supervisors, let me say, please forgive my tardiness. I will go on the record saying I am directionally challenged. I am enjoying my time that I've been onboard so far. I am following my strategic 30, 60, 90-day plan that I shared with the interview panel, so I will be meeting with a few of you and hopefully more. Thank you so much for your patience as I do my assessment to ensure we put Crossroads back on the right track, so it runs smoothly like a train. So thank you so much for your patience and the community. We are here to serve you, I am here to serve you, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Moore. And I would like to add that Mrs. Beverly Booth is the representative from the Board of Supervisors on Crossroads Board, and Beverly, we thank you so much.
Thank you.
For that, really appreciate that. Okay, is Mr. Scott Frederick in the house?
I didn't see him.
He is, he's, he was not taking up a public seat.
He's covering his weight.
Oh, okay.
He's hiding.
We're waiting for you, Scott. Good, next on our agenda.
I was in trouble.
Mr. Scott Frederick with Highway Matters. How are you, Mr.?
I'm doing, I'm doing well, how are you?
I'm great.
So just so that I don't mess up, this is just my update of our routine maintenance, not the public hearing, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I've got a little bit of an update for you tonight. We've started work last fall on Route 628, Mill Creek. It's a real rustic project that we're improving, and the cold weather caught us. We've been out there a little bit this spring, getting the road back into shape to put the hard surface on it. We're going to be out there the rest of this week, regrade it and roll in it, and on Monday, we're going to start shooting that hard surface down, double layer of surface treatment. You'll also see us out on Route 634, Mount Pleasant. We're going to be working on the shoulders and patching a few bad spots in that road throughout the rest of this week. Route 665, Darlington Heights Road, we've been out there a lot with the Boomax, cutting the brush back. We're going to, we're still working to complete that route, we'll probably be out there the rest of this week and maybe next week. Our Boomax actually broke down yesterday, so that's kind of the latest. We're hoping to finish it this week. We're just working our way through all of our secondary routes with that, and that just happens to be where we are right now with that machine. Route 604, we've been earlier this spring, I think, I can't remember if I updated you on that the last time I was here, but we've widened the shoulders, we started where we left off before, and we made it close to a mile, I believe, and then we got to where we had to stop this year. Another update for Route 604 is the Lynchburg District is doing a safety project on that road, and you'll notice that they striped it, the work that we did, they put a double yellow line, and they squeezed in edge lines all the way from the Charlotte County line to Darlington Heights Road. So if you drive through there, you'll see that. We've got locates marked, we're going to be installing about 100 signs in all the curves, so chevrons, advanced warning signs to alert you of an upcoming curve. I'm not 100% familiar with every single sign, but there's about 100 of them, and you'll see them being installed, so.
That sounds good.
Yeah, so they're going to be working kind of in concert with the work we're doing to see what kind of effect it will have on the crash rate for that road. So I'm happy to see their focus is on that, on that road. When I say they, I mean traffic engineering, but we've been focused on it as the residency, working with the board ever since I've been here, so. Our mowing contractor is in the Green Bay area right now picking up litter, and when he gets done there, he'll start mowing, and then he's going to work his way through the county from there. We're going to start mowing the primary routes. BDOT, I say we, we'll be using our forces to mow the primary route, starting in the beginning of June, kind of working right along with what our contractor's doing on secondaries. We're going to be doing a little bit of work on Height School Road, the shoulders have gotten in bad shape on that road, and there's a couple broken up spots that we're going to repair. spots that we're gonna repair, so that's on our to-do list. I believe we'll be out there next week. We've been using our inmate crews. We've got three spots that we're using them to mow right now. You'll see them in front of Lowe's. I believe they were out there yesterday trimming around the guardrails and stuff, and they're gonna mow that median. They're gonna do Granite Falls, and they're also gonna mow 15 at Dowdy's Corner. So, we've been, we're gonna use them after they get done doing that. We're gonna be cutting the site distance back at all the crossovers on 460, so just opening up site distance, getting tree limbs, all that's always nice to, one of those things you have to touch every year, get those opened up so people can see better. And then I think the rest of this is all just our upcoming work on rural rustics, which I was gonna kind of mention during the public hearing, but the, the three that we'll be working on later this summer is Bolden, Flornoy, Whispering Woods, and Schoolhouse Road. We've already got them open to charges, we've got all of our waste sites identified for the material that we have to take away, like clean out the ditches and degrading work we're gonna do. So, we're ready to start those jobs around July, or maybe even August, but, so everything's ready to go with those three, and that's all I have until we start the public hearing. But I can open it up to the board if there's any concerns you have for me that you'd like me to look at, or any questions.
Scott, there's several places on the 658 to 54th Road that have been logging through there quite a bit this spring. The road is actually collapsing and sinking.
Okay.
One of them's right at the bridge to Buffalo. One of them is on past Elum Road, going toward Pamplin on the left-hand side.
Okay.
Maybe sometime if you all look that way, you might take a look at.
Okay. Do you know if they're still logging, or have they completed?
They finished at Fred Russell's and right across, only 22 road, I think they have also. I don't know anymore they're gonna be doing in there.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take a look at that.
Excuse me, wait a minute. Up at Elum Road, the old Davis farm has been sold, they're logging in there now.
Okay, on Elum Road. All right.
It's an intersection of Elum and 54th.
Okay.
Davis Farm there.
All righty, well, we'll get those roads back in good shape. Anybody else?
Any other comments?
Thanks for doing the patchwork on Mount Pleasant.
Oh, yeah, no problem. Happy to, happy to get it, get it repaired. Thank you.
And I thank you, Scott, for the work that it's gonna be beginning on. Whispering Woods and Schoolhouse Roads, both of those are roads that are requested, so I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah.
Work will be starting on those.
Yeah, they're gonna be good projects to get completed and behind us.
Good.
Well, I guess, I don't know exactly how it works, we've got two minutes.
We have two minutes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before you go to the public hearing, there is a resolution also behind Highway Matters for the Board's consideration.
Yes.
Okay, for the, the speed reduction on 460. I think that came up at the last meeting.
It's page 106.
So, before the Board, there's a letter from Sheriff Epps.
Yes.
And so, VDOT Scott has been working closely with us over the many months regarding the Board's safety concerns. So, he recommended that the Board of Supervisors adopt a formal resolution, that he can send up the chain with Sheriff Epps's letter, so that is the draft resolution in the Board pack for the Board's consideration to support what Sheriff Epps has documented regarding the public safety concerns at the 307-460 intersection.
And everybody sees that in the Board pack, isn't it?
Do you need a motion about that?
Yeah, do you need a motion for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and second that we adopt this resolution? Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. We approve.
Thank you, guys, for formally supporting the sheriff's efforts, and I'll let the cat out of the bag now, I already submitted it to Traffic Engineering.
Oh, wow.
Ball's already rolled.
Good work, good work.
You can send her as well.
Yeah, I told them it's coming, so I'm gonna put a follow-up email, make sure they get it in their files, too. Thank you, guys.
One question just for you, the six-year plan, the entrance to the, looks like in the center at Jonathan Heights, there's a huge hole on the right-hand side if you're coming eastbound. I guess that'd be northbound, actually, if you're coming north. Check that, I mean, it's a huge, big hole.
Okay.
It is. I put some rocks in it the other day, it's so deep.
You know, Beverly?
Axle breaker.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get that one checked. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the time has arrived for our first public hearing. The Board of Supervisors will receive inputs on the following. VDOT six-year plan, in accordance with Section 33.2-331 of the Court of Virginia, adjourned county VDOT public hearing with behalf of a purpose of receiving public comments on the proposed county secondary six-year plan for fiscal year 2023 through 2028, and on the secondary system construction budget for fiscal year 2023. Scott.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, I brought copies of the six-year plan, but I'm assuming it's already in your Board packet, but let me know if you need one. So, at this time, we had the work session, I think it was a little over a month ago, and I was able to capture what I believe is all, all the stuff we talked about at that, at that work session. So, I can just read through here by route number and approximate location and cost First on the list is Hidden Lake Road 751. That one's completed, but we hadn't got a chance to get it all the way closed out, so it has to stay on the list. Same for the next one, 740 Copper Hill Road. It's completed, closed out, still on the list. Mill Creek is that one where we were caught by the weather that I just mentioned, that we'll be out there shooting the surface. As long as the weather doesn't interfere with our plans, it'll be Monday when we're actually putting the surface down. And then is moving into the ones that will start later this year, the fiscal year 23 projects. Route 702 Bolden Flornoy Road, so $208,000 is the estimate for the costs. Route 744 Whispering Woods Road, $256,000 cost estimate. 730 Schoolhouse Road, $68,000 cost estimate. 771 Briery Way Road, $50,000 cost estimate. That was one that we worked together on this year, and we were able to work it into the mix. And then 780 Old Oak Road, $102,000 estimate. Route 632, which is Falkland Road, that one has a $221,000 cost estimate. Route 647 Lowman Road, that one has $161,000 cost estimate. Route 682 Junction Canal Road, $294,000 cost estimate. Then 611 Quail Crossing Road, $294,000 cost estimate. Then another section of Route 647 Rice Creek Road, $161,000 cost estimate. Route 625 Featherfin Road, that one has a $420,000 cost estimate, that one's close to three miles long. Route 668 Bell Road has a $42,000 cost estimate. And then, this is the last one, we talked about it in our work session, as long as I'm not mistaken, Route 632 Schultz Mill Road, $219,800 on the cost estimate for that one. And then the next few blocks, they're just blocks that are on all of our six-year plans. They're what we call call centers. There's one for right-of-way, if we were ever to have to acquire right-of-way for something. There's one for traffic services, if we get a request to put up signage on a secondary road, like sometimes the Board may request signage on a secondary road. There's one for drainage, and the last one is 40 on engineering, right-of-way. Traffic services, engineering, right-of-way, and then drainage. So, that's all four of those. They're in every project, it just gives us the ability to work and have something to charge to on these routes. So, if there's anything that I wasn't able to capture properly, please let me know, I can open it up to the Board, or I'll let you guys take over from here.
Okay, we have a spokesperson for this particular public hearing, Mr. Joe Hines. Would you come forward?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm here to basically ask for your support of the paving of Briery Way Road. I know I came into the work session with you all, so I just wanted to express that and mention that it's paving roughly one-third mile, which leads to a subdivision which already has paved roads in it, about two-thirds of the mile paved roads in it. And then also to, just to alert you, I think Mr. Stanley, two of the residents, I think, emailed you today, basically expressing their support of the Briery subdivision for this as well, too, but just wanted to lend my voice of support.
Anthony Wilson and Brandy and Daniel.
Correct. Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other speakers or presenters for that particular hearing?
On Quail Crossing, that's, the amount is to do the whole road, right? Because one time we talked about doing a third, a third, a third.
Yeah, so we were applying funding to four different routes for a number of years, and we finally got to the point where they're, most of them are funded in their entirety. That's 2.1 miles, it says from Route 613 to Route 612, so I think that captures all of them.
That's all, okay, okay.
The four that we were working on were Featherfin, Quail Crossing, Rice Creek, and...
Can I say something, Scott?
Yes, sir.
I think we need to flip Rice Creek and Lowman's.
Rice Creek and Lowman's.
Yeah, both of $161,000 projects, but Lowman's, I mean Rice Creek should be priority over Lowman's.
Okay.
So, that change, I'll recommend.
Okay.
I'd like to see that. Both of them in my district, so we need to flip them.
Yeah, and that's, I can do that. I don't know if you can approve it with that as a comment, and I could get it revised and let Mr. Stanley sign it where he needs to, or they're far enough out where we could do that next year and really not affect the work at all. I could just make a note of it, and we could capture it next year.
No, I would have flipped it.
Okay. I'm doing this at the Board's pleasure, so.
Mr. Chairman, so may I ask for your reason for the move?
Because, because more houses affected on, see Lowman Road going way down, it's paved about halfway now. Rice Creek, those constituents been on me, I've been working with those constituents ever since way prior to talking about the solar plant, and that's right, Rice Creek always been in the section of road piecemeal to try to complete it. So, it's only right that Rice Creek gonna be priority over Lowman's.
Yeah, and, and I should have put it in that order in the first place, because now that I think about it, as you were applying funding, that's how you did it.
That's what happened.
It's an oversight on my part.
It's no problem. I, I, I figured it would be, because anyway.
And supervisor, Chairman, so now the residents would be very appreciative of that consideration. Any other comments? Yes.
And I would say we need to make sure we close the public hearing.
Okay, yeah. Public hearing is now closed. Can we have a motion? So moved.
I move. I second, I, I make a subsequent motion that we, I make a motion, but a subsequent motion that we approve the six-year plan with the, with the, and its revision that Rice Creek is priority and Lowman's is changed in priority.
Okay.
Yeah, so that motion's been made. I'm on board. I can do that, as long as it's what the Board wants.
I'll second.
Okay. It's motion and second that is moved with the, with the amendments and approval, Ms. Patty Cooper.
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. Okay, so moved, approved. Now, next is the subdivision ordinance. An ordinance amendment to Appendix A subdivision of Prince Edward County Code to provide for an agricultural, forestal exception, further define a family subdivision, and allow the Board of Supervisors to set the fee schedule by resolution.
Yes. Madam Chairman, members of the Board, this public hearing has been duly advertised. If you remember, at your last meeting, you all asked us to re-advertise this with a lower standard of five acres. At the Planning Commission, held their first hearing in February on, on a draft ordinance that had the, the standard threshold at 50 acres. Subsequent to that first public hearing, they recommended that we advertise this at 25, and that's what you had at your last meeting. Mr. Stanley and I have been, have polled, and you have it in your packet of information, what other counties do, Amelia, Buckingham, Charlotte, Alphamatics, and Nottaway. The, the, most counties have about a 20-acre standard. This is a tool for, to keep farmland in production, where someone wants to cut off or subdivide a, a smaller portion of a larger tract. Currently, we do not have an exemption that would allow them to not have an entrance or VDOT review, they, that has to, VDOT and Health Department has to perk all lots currently. I have had, in my time here, three plats total that were intended to be agricultural, continued agricultural use, that had to be perked and had an entrance review as part of the subdivision process. Want to be clear, this does not apply to residential zone land. I have had some calls from some residents that kind of didn't understand if a land property is on R1, or R3, or R2, that does not have an agricultural use, so those lots, if a new lot is created, have to be perked. But this is intended to help keep farmland in production and to lower the cost of a seller or purchaser in creation of a new lot to be marketed or bought. But it does not, it does not encumber land that's already on the, platted, on record, that can be bought and sold at any time. It only happens when a smaller portion of a larger chunk of land is being cut off and a new tract is created. I have any questions from the Board?
Okay. Okay, we have a...
And I've had, I've had, I'm sorry, I've had no further comments from the public since your last public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Ron. At this time, we call on Mr. Jesse Yates from the Lockett District.
Madam Chair, if you can fish that open the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I fish it open to hearing, sorry.
Thank you.
You go.
Thank y'all for having me again. I didn't think I was gonna need to speak tonight after the last meeting we had. My understanding that the last meeting y'all was gonna vote on the five acres. Are we talking about changing that to 20?
No, no.
Those advertised to five.
I really don't have anything to say. Thank y'all, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Any other speakers on that?
What could be better than that?
Okay, the hearing is now closed, but I entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we can change the limit on the acreage to five acres.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion and second that we change the acreage to five acres and second? Patty?
No.
Okay, no. Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So, that has been moved. Oh, okay, I see that hand. I figure it's closed. Next, we will have the special use permit. A request by Israel Yoder for a special use permit to operate a sawmill facility on Tax Map Partial Number 8681 on County Line Road, Cullen, Virginia.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board, this matter is a request by Israel Yoder to operate a sawmill facility on his property behind his home. This public hearing was properly advertised in the formal herald, also adjoining property owner... Also adjoining property owner notifications were sent, in addition to notification being sent to Charlotte County, since this was in, within a half mile of the county boundary. Basically, County Line Road is the county boundary. The public hearing was held by the Planning Commission at their April meeting. No one spoke in opposition. We did have one letter that came in that day opposing that application, which you have as part of their minutes. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval with conditions, which you have in your packet, forwarding this to you. Since that public hearing, we do have one letter from Mr. Tom Grant, which is in your table pack, that came to you concerning this application. I do want to note that the, most of the sawmill operation equipment is there. They were using it to create some lumber for their cheese factory, but want to continue that location and have it as a public sawmill. So that's how, that's why this request is coming to you all. Again, I do, in your packet, you have recommended conditions by the Planning Commission, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I noticed in his letter, talking about hours of operation, even Saturday is up to eight o'clock at night. Any conditions? I didn't see the page in here with the conditions.
Yes, if you look in the Planning Commission, they actually modified those. They rec, the Planning Commission recommended, let me get the one, look under general, item number 11 on page 147. The Planning Commission actually recommended hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. At the public hearing, Mr. Yoder said he could make that work, and he, and he was, was not objectionable to that. I think Mr. Jones maybe can speak on that.
Yeah, but we definitely did that.
But that was, that was a change from his application. He did request different hours, but that was added condition that Planning Commission in their recommendation of approval. No Sunday operation.
Public hearing now open. I call on Mr. Tom Grant.
Good evening, I'm Tom Grant. I live at 3390 County Line Road, directly across from this property. I have sent the board a copy of my text, so I don't know if you want me to read it or just cover some highlights.
Just highlight, please.
Highlights, okay. We look at the test for special use for spot zoning requests. If it is in the best interest of the health, safety, morals, and the community is pursuant to the comprehensive plan, we don't see this. Zoning, land use, and the comprehensive plan should dictate the use of the land. Creating a special privilege to one or a few properties is spot zoning. Property owners who do whatever they want with their property first, then seek approval for creating a non-conforming use clearly demonstrate that they don't care about their neighbors, they don't care about the property, they just do it. We ask that you do not create islands which are far different from the entire district, as it is zoned agricultural and residential. We consider this a nuisance. I have not gone around to all the homeowners in the area yet, but this is the general opinion that I'm getting, talking to a few of them right now. The zoning goals that I read in your documents and our documents in Charlotte County all talk about conserving property values, safeguarding the general public welfare, eliminating non-conforming uses. And in our opinion, if zoning is not enforced, it is ineffectual. There are several sawmills in the area, two in Charlotte County and two within Prince Edward, within 10 minutes of this property. I don't know.
About two more minutes, Mr. Grant.
On the back of each one of those pictures, you'll see where it's located and in whose I'm asking that the non-conforming use should not continue, be enlarged, or extended, and we're suggesting that an amortization provision, which calls for the complete stoppage and removal of this sawmill within one year, be done. This minimizes any loss from the changeover and gives time to plan ahead for the owner for the most advantageous use of this land. Right now, we visited every other sawmill in the area that you now have pictures on, and what we're getting is fumes, air laden, air pollution, if you will, noise, obnoxious activity, and general traffic problems. We don't want to see that in a residential agricultural area. If you agree with the amortization of one year to phase this out completely, I've listed in your document those areas that are generally noted for being those areas that standards are applied to. The standards, as far as you discuss time from 6:00 to 8:00 or whatever.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers for this?
I'd like to ask him a question before he steps down.
Please, sir.
Where is your residence?
3390 County Line Road, directly across from this property.
Sorry, Trey Lambert, you're the next house down?
He would be the next house to our left, as you're facing the street. And the other gentleman sitting there with the hands up is the next house over.
You're actually in Charlotte County?
Yes, correct, correct.
And you're the next house before you go down the hill, sir?
No.
Just want to make sure.
Not down the hill, but on the flat area, towards Darlington Heights Road. Darlington Heights.
Get on the right before you get to Mr. Grant's. Next one is Carnegie.
Right.
Going down the hill, Carnegie.
Carnegie would be on my right, Lambert would be on my left.
Beverly, I give you time to look at that, and then I'll close.
So you, excuse me, you say you was a resident of Prince Edward, Charlotte?
Charlotte County. That's the County Line Road, one side Prince Edward, one side Charlotte.
I think that's the private hearing is closed. Get him a motion.
Madam Chair, this was, I got a call from Israel today, and he wanted to make sure that we understood that our eight o'clock is our seven o'clock in the morning. You know, if that, if that, he said he did not, didn't know that he made that apparent in the special use. He just asked if I would run that up, and I told him that I would. If they work from seven in the morning, which is our eight o'clock, because they don't observe, they like seven times.
All right, all right.
So it'd be seven, it'd be seven to seven year round, it'd be seven o'clock our time, all the time. Seven o'clock when hours is seven, seven o'clock when hours is eight. That makes any sense?
I think it maybe is cleared, I think it may be cleared, just put seven to seven on the permit.
All right.
If you choose to prove it.
Correct, I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Grant.
Seven to six.
Seven to six, yeah, he's a...
Yes, seven to six.
Six, okay.
Yeah. Seven, seven, one, seven a.m. to six p.m.
Six p.m. Yeah, right.
Correct.
Okay, what's your move for?
I make a motion we approve it. There are others in the area, and they're productive people, and it is an agriculture area, and forestation is an agricultural product, too.
I second. Okay, so a motion and second that we approve this ordinance. Ms. Patty Cooper-Jones?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Odessa, approved. So it's a move, it's approved. Next, we have special use permit, a request by Impact Power Solutions LLC for a special use permit to operate a five-megawatt community solar energy facility on Tax Map Partial Number 43836 on Lama Road, Pamplin. Robbie?
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the board, this is an application that was filed for community solar, which is, maxes out at five megawatts AC. This is a small-scale site, it's 33.6 acres in total size of that. It's a, it's a smaller footprint on panels, about 20 acres of panels. This, this public hearing was duly advertised in the formal herald, adjoining property owning letters were sent to the adjourners, as well as to Charlotte County, since this is, again, close to the corporate limits of the county boundary. The purpose of this is to, location of a community solar facility, the Planning Commission held their advisory hearing on April 18th. No one spoke in opposition, and they recommended approval of this with conditions. I've had no comments for or against this application since it's been advertised for both public hearings. Do want to note that one thing we have not done yet, which is in your conditions, is we are doing, or you all are doing sighting agreements, which they, they require a separate public hearing under the Code of Virginia. We haven't done that, but that is a condition of approval, which is in the potential conditions you have at your place setting. So that, that's a negotiation between the county and the developer on, based on revenue share, which is allowed by Code of Virginia. So just wanted you to know, to note that that is in the conditions, and we will be going through that if this is recommended for approval. And I do have that, you do have the option for that, and that is reflected in the, in recommended motions, no matter what you do. I'd be glad to answer any questions. We did send you this packet electronically. It is, it's hundreds of pages to satisfy buffering, or decommissioning, or environmental. It's their standard package. They met our application requirements. I worked with them on that, been working with them for a number of months. The first filing on this, or the initial filing, which was incomplete, was actually back in December. We did do a impact, financial impact analysis. They provided that, as well as photo simulations, which were in the electronic packet, so you can see this is properly buffered and will not be visible from any property. And Thomas Jefferson Highway, which is a scenic byway, will never see this site. So we are, we are preserving the scenic byway and the fusheed, and continuing that in, anywhere we have a historical or scenic byways with these type of applications.
Is this on the same piece of property?
Yes, it is.
This is a piece that we actually, was it four or five years ago? Time, has the time run out? Is that why this is being re-applied?
The owner signed an agreement, the, the timing of that timed out with that developer. They never came forward to the county. That was actually approved under, before you had the, the current alternate energy ordinance. This is only one landowner, in that time, there were two landowners, but this landowner entered this agreement, legal agreement, a lease with Impact Power Solutions.
I thought it was the same piece of property.
Yes, it is exactly the same location. Yeah, so, yes.
That did run out?
That, that did run out, that lease agreement with the owner.
Okay, public hearing is now open. At this time, we will hear from Mr. George Welch from Buffalo District.
I'm George Welch, Buffalo District. Several years ago, there was a solar project envisioned where the land only joined at a point, I got a letter in the mail, I didn't get any letter on this one. I have a 2,000-foot boundary line between that property and mine. I'm not sure what happened. If I, I don't get the newspaper, if my sister hadn't told me about this, I would not have known. I'm interested to know if the solar collectors are made in China, or if we're just going to continue to enrich them. I personally prefer trees over denuded property, but apparently there are no trees left on this area, anyway. It's pretty clean. And I will be able to see it from my property, not from my house, but from my property. Also, I'm interested to know how the company plans to get the power from the solar site to the substation. I haven't heard anything about any way to get it there, whether they plan to beam it up, take it by helicopter. They have to come through my property to get there if they're going on to Dominion right away. Dominion has a right to construct, take care of herbs, vegetation, whatnot, but no private company has authorization to use my property. I haven't heard anything from anybody about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. J.K. from IPS Solar.
Good evening, I'm J.K. Thank you for seeing me tonight and letting us speak to this. I'm with IPS Solar. We are out of Minneapolis. And to address some things that were said, the previous solar array that was applied for, that was a different type of solar. That was a utility scale, which crosses over different boundary lines and things like that before the community solar program was implemented. So this is a much smaller, single landowner project, so it wouldn't cross any boundary lines or anything like that, and that's why we are here. It's a different permitting process and things like that. The power access and things like that, we would be putting in through Dominion, they would actually be doing on their lines, their grid, because it is their grid, they would be the ones to put up the lines. We would tie into the existing grid and upgrade any single-phase lines to three-phase lines, which would also benefit anybody in the area as well. So it would be using all the existing Dominion rightaways. Just to give you a little more about the project, it was covered very well, roughly 20 acres of five-megawatt site, which is the largest maximum site under Virginia's program here. We do believe that we have a winner on a site here with, from a land standpoint, a county standpoint, and the utility standpoint, because of the lack of visibility from neighbors, which is always a very large issue we run into. We do everything we can to find sites that are going to be hidden like this, and this one has really turned out very well so far. The process we go through and everything, we will be planting pollinator-friendly native grasses underneath it. This will help with water management, because there is a slight western slope. This will help with erosion, this will help with compaction, and if this land were ever to go into agricultural at the end of life of this project, those native grasses are deep-rooted, so they would do nothing but improve the soil quality underneath it. It's essentially a CRP program, seed mixture, but bolstered up a little more. We would also have to build a very large access road to get to here, the site, which would also upgrade any of the county roads under our expense that, that are there, or whether they're, the landowners are private, just because of the very short construction time, we need to build a very long and expensive road, which after construction will be used maintenance and maybe once a year for an annual check, just to see everything going on. But after the build, it is a very slow-used road. The owner has permission to let anybody use it, being that it is their land. IPS, we are a 31-year-old company out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. We've been building these community solar sites all over the country for years, and we very much approach it the right way, by trying to work with you, listening to your conditions, and very much following through with everything that we say we're going to do, based off of your comments and recommendations as well. The, the program itself is fairly new. It's a community solar program, so the goal is not to sell power to Dominion. It is for homeowners and businesses that do not have the ability to put solar on their homes, whether it's a bad roof or just shading or things like this. This program allows them to subscribe to a garden, and then Dominion will treat their bill as if they have solar produced on site. They're not... They're not actually getting the power from the existing solar array, because it is put onto the grid, and from there, it's dispersed like water. It goes to where it needs to go. But this program allows people that don't have good roofs, whether it be shading, age of roof, financially, they can participate in solar and be treated as if they have solar on their property. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. I do have Amy here, who is our local contact. She's an engineer with Acue Point, I believe it's pronounced, and they are of Lynchburg. And then we do have Evan Carlson, who is our Chief Real Estate Officer. He's back in Minnesota, and he is on the line as well, if there's anything that I can't answer for you all.
Well, relevant to Mr. Welch's question, when and how would he be contacted? If this affected his land?
I can give him my contact directly, or if there's anything that would affect his land, we would reach out to him personally, by mail, phone call, whatever way needs to be, if there is anything that would affect his property in any way.
And if this road came through that was built, would he be compensated in any way before interfering with his land?
Absolutely. If it's on his property, yes. As far as my knowledge, this is all, we are using an existing field road that is there, and we are upgrading that road. So this would not be an actual new path. We would just be upgrading that road to spec for commercial-grade, or heavy trailers and things like that.
The power transmission that this gentleman mentioned, is that going to be overhead lines or is that going to be buried?
That will, everything inside our fence where we have really, you know, the most control we can have, it will be buried until it comes up out of the fence. And then at that point, it's really, we always want Dominion to, if there's any line of sight or things like that, we want to try to bury them. But Dominion, they do want them to be above ground, just because of their alignment. It's a lot easier for them to access. So at the point of interconnection, there will be poles, and it will be above ground. This is, there is an existing transmission line directly west of the property. That's a high transmission line. We do not tie into those. We will tie into your standard telephone pole lines that we all have seen. And so it's nothing that is not already existing in the area. We would just upgrade the lines if need be, from single-phase to three-phase. So it's not tying into the large metal transmission lines. It would be your standard telephone poles that we would tie into, directly into the grid.
Where is that pole?
Where's the poles would run?
That you're going to tie into? Is it next to the road?
Yeah, exactly. Right, based off of what Dominion needs and things like that, access. We don't want to have their, you know, cherry picker trucks or whatever they're called to have to be off-roading or anything. It's, the poles will run adjacent to the road, so they have easiest access to repair anything that could be an issue. The meter itself will be right on the east side of the train tracks, just for line-of-sight purposes, so the meter readers don't have to drive roughly a quarter mile up the road to find the meter. It'll be, that's where the meter will be, but everything else will be running adjacent to the roads.
And the overhead cable is going to follow this road or is it going to cut straight across this property?
The overhead cables will, once it hits the fence line of our solar array, it will come up right in that northwest corner, that is, and then it'll follow right along the road. It shouldn't be cutting across anybody's property. It should be all using the right-of-way and everything that we have for easements, whether they're utility and access. Yeah, thank you.
I want some of the people to see reduced rates on their electric bills, regardless.
So it's not necessarily reduced rate, but if it's, this is the subscriber side to it. If they choose to subscribe to the garden, it'll be a credit. It's, they will, whatever amount of energy you're using, you can subscribe that to the garden, and that's what you will get credited by. So not necessarily reduced rate, but it's more of a credit system. So your bill should be lower based off of these credits, but the rate is likely going to stay the same. It's just they're going to be crediting you a certain amount, depending on what the program is with the subscriptions.
Yeah, enough of comments. Public hearing closed. Ready for motion?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Lou, do you understand this to come out towards forty-seven? Is that what you're understanding?
According to what I see on this map, it's coming right to a pole right beside the railroad track. I was trying to look at it. It looked like a red line that's following the fence line, a wood line.
Can anybody hear me? I could tell you where that is.
That's Evan Carlson, our Chief Real Estate Officer.
Yes, yes, speaker, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure if that was on. But yeah, that's, the line we're connecting to is right west of the woods. But it kind of runs diagonally in a northwest direction. So we don't have to go all the way over to the railroad track. We put our pole and our segment right there, we plug into that line, right kind of near the exit, the entrance of the gate. That line runs north to a upstate, which is where the power is also distributed further spread by.
This is a high transmission line?
It's a distribution line, so community solar has to operate at a distribution level. Bigger ones, like the last project we talked about, that was more likely to be a transmission level, probably under the high on federal infrastructure. To plug into this use level, there's natural power that goes to the utility, which is Dominion. So we have submitted an application to Dominion, and they have accepted our application, and they set that that line, people handling our harsh phones. Maybe why the previous project failed, they may have been trying to get into the transmission level, but it's distribution level.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I make a motion to reapprove this project.
I'll second that.
So motion is second that we approve this project? Patty, I'm sorry?
Madam Chair, just want to clarify, in the motion, the maker of the motion is agreeable that it's with the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission and subject to a sighting agreement to be mutually agreed upon by the board and Impact Power Solutions LLC.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, thank you for the conditions. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Well, that's a yes. Okay, approved, so moved. Thank you. You're so welcome. The next public hearing, food and beverage tax. A county ordinance to enact and levy a county food and beverage tax at a rate of six percent, which would only be collected outside of the corporate limits of the town of Farnwell, which proceeds would be earmarked to help pay for anticipated school capital improvements. And Mr. Stanley will fully explain that to us.
Madam Chair, members of the board, during the 2020 Journal Assembly session, House Bill seven eighty-five and Senate Bill five eighty-eight were passed with the following key provisions. Authorize all counties to levy on emissions a rate not to exceed ten percent, with the exception of counties in the historic triangle where an additional state sales and use tax is imposed. Authorize all counties to levy transient occupancy taxes at rates exceeding two percent. The revenue derived from rates greater than two would be split either, one for purposes previously authorized, or two for rates between two and five percent for tourism promotion, as is currently required for counties that secured the authority to impose taxes at five percent. And rate, revenue from rates greater than five percent be used for general purposes. Also authorize all counties to impose cigarette taxes at a rate not to exceed forty cents per pack. And authorize all counties to impose meals taxes at a rate not to exceed six percent and eliminates the referendum requirement. The locality in which a meals tax referendum failed prior to July one, 2020, would have to wait six years after the date of the failed referendum to oppose the tax. During the FY 2020, 2021 budget process, the board asked staff to look at alternative funding sources. Since that time, the county has instituted the transient occupancy tax at seven percent and is in discussions on the regional cigarette tax. As you know, Delegate Edmonds carried a bill in the 2022 Journal Assembly session to have Prince Edward County added to the list of qualified localities under Chapter fifty-eight point one, six oh two, that would have allowed us to collect up to one percent additional sales tax revenue for the construction or renovation of schools within the locality. We will ask him to try again next year. Attached in your packet, the draft ordinance to enact a county food and beverage tax at a rate of six percent. The county would only collect the tax outside the limits of the town of Farnwell. With the largest restaurant, Fish and Pig, looking to move into the town limits here in the next few months, we do not anticipate collecting a significant amount of revenue currently. Most of it would be generated from prepared food at various mom-and-pop convenience stores around the county. None of our surrounding counties currently has a meals tax. We looked at some counties similarly situated and offered some collection comparison. A lot of them range from, say, three hundred thousand, the low end, up to Amherst and Amity. Based on the per capita collection amount, we would anticipate collecting possibly three hundred thousand up per year. The revenue would be a good source of revenue, as identified to help pay for anticipated school capital improvement costs in the coming years. And again, Sarah's passed out a copy of the draft ordinance. We've got an advertisement for public hearing tonight, and we've got, I think, three people signed up to speak.
The public hearing now open. And for the three individuals, I will allow up to five minutes, no more. We call on Ben Campbell from the Farnwell District.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak to you tonight. I would like to speak in support of this ordinance and urge you to pass it. And I just want to make a couple, a couple points for your consideration. One is that this won't just be a tax for Prince Edward County residents. People who travel into the county and buy prepared meals here will pay it, just like we do when we travel into other counties. So keep that in mind. A second point is that prepared food is a luxury. So in a lot of ways, this is a luxury tax. You don't have to buy prepared food. If you don't like this tax, you don't have to buy the prepared food. And the third point, that's already, it's already kind of been mentioned, is that we've been trying for a while to raise funding for our schools, as Mr. Stanley mentioned. We didn't get approval from the General Assembly to hold a referendum to increase our general sales tax. A year ago, I'm sure you all remember, we had a bit of a debate in the county about whether we would reassess property, or once property tax values were reassessed, if we would change the millage rate so that people wouldn't get an increased tax. And we had a lot of back and forth on that. And I would also point out that there's another way that we could raise funding, if I'm not mistaken. In 2020, House Bill five thirty-four allowed municipalities to impose a five-cent tax on each disposable plastic bag provided to shoppers in grocery, farmer, pharmacy, and convenience stores. So far, only seven municipalities have voted to enact this tax. We could be the eighth. That would bring some funding into our county as well. And I'd point out as well that using a plastic bag is a luxury. Just bring your own reusable bag, and you don't have to pay that tax. So there's lots of ways that we could increase funding, increase revenue for our schools' infrastructure. To quote Van Halen, "Miss a beat, you lose the rhythm." And we've missed lots of beats, and we're pretty behind the times in supporting and funding our, our school infrastructure. So I just ask you to go ahead, make the change right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Next, we will have Mr. Justin Pope, also from Farnwell.
Thank you all. Nice to see you again. If we're going to get to the end zone, if I can use a football metaphor, of making these urgent repairs to the schools that I think we all agree are needed, we're probably not going to do it on an eighty-yard pass play all at once. We're going to need a mix of some running plays and some passing plays and maybe a trick play here and there. I think that this proposal tonight is a running play, but it's an important one. And it's important that we take what steps we can. The General Assembly has tied our hands a bit in terms of the full playbook, but we need to keep moving, moving forward on that, and I hope you all will support it. I wanted to make sure that you all, maybe getting a little tired of me and Ben and some others, but at, but at every stage of this, as we move forward, I wanted you to see that there are parents who care about this a lot and come out and support a running plays, passing plays, trick plays, whatever it is. Longwood cares a lot about this and will support that, that there's a lot of deep support in the community. It matters a lot, because there's stuff we got to start doing with the schools now, even if we can't do it all. As you all know from Doug, there's some really urgent repairs, and I think, you know, just from the point of view of the repairs that are necessary, but also giving some hope to people in the community to see something start to happen, even if we can't go as fast and as far as we want. The other reason it's really important is when we go to the General Assembly, I hope, next year, you know, as I did this year and some others, others did, it's really important that they see that we are a community that's willing to do our part. We're asking for help, but we're asking to help ourselves. That was literally what we were asking with this bill. Let us help ourselves. You know, we weren't asking for anything directly. If they see that we're a community that's stepping up and is, and is willing to do our part to get this urgent school situation dealt with, it will help. It will also help a lot if we can look them in the eye and say, "Our community is speaking with one unified voice. We're doing everything, everything we can. We, we, there is no, there is no daylight here. You, you may think that this is a situation where there are some people in the community who think some, the schools need to be fixed, other people don't. There are some people who think this is an important investment, there are other people who don't. I think we're pretty, a pretty unified community that this is really important. And if we show up and we demonstrate that we're doing the running plays, we're doing the passing plays, it will really help us make that case in Richmond next year, whether it's, it's again, asking about the sales referendum, if that's what makes sense at that time. Maybe it's asking for direct funding, if the General Assembly can get its act together and pass a budget that maybe even could support in other ways. Whatever we're going to need over these next few years to get to the end zone, we're always going to be stronger if we're making it clear that we are willing to do our part as a community, as we are, and that we're speaking with a unified voice about how, how important this is. Again, as you all know, for, for the future of Prince Edward, for families that are thinking of relocating here, for businesses that are thinking of relocating here, for people who are deciding whether to raise a family here, the appearance of the school is not, and condition of the school is not the only issue. It's not the only issue related to the schools, but it's really important. It's a signal. It shows our young people. It gives, gives our young people an environment where they can learn. It gives our teachers an environment where they can teach, and it shows them, students and teachers, that, that that is a priority here. And it shows people who are thinking about making their home here that it's a priority too. So I hope you all will see that there is community support for this, this step as we, as we try to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pope. Dr. Hood Frazier from the Lockett District.
Never eat onions or wear a mask. Yeah, I'm Hood Frazier from the Lockett District, and I wanted to also speak on behalf of the tax. I, I think that it's, it's a step, it's a first step toward actually providing what we need to for our students, for our teachers, because through this, we can actually keep our student, I'm working with the stu, with the students, I'm working with the teachers in the schools. And when we have a building that is kind of up the snuff, that is, that is renovated, I think you're, you're going to see more teachers stay. We're not going to be losing as many teachers. It's going to improve attendance. The research on this shows that, that the more that you have better facilities available for your students, you're going to keep those. But just as important, we're going to be keeping people in our community, and that's what's, that's really the basis for this. If we can take a step like this, we can start to renovate the schools, but we can also attract more people to come to our community and stay here, which would be very important, I think, for the, for the tax base. So I, I, as a grandparent and two children, or two children who have children in the area, I also really would like to see us really step up the game with our schools and, and support them. And this is a, a big step in that direction. So I, I, I've written to you before, I think, about this, but I just wanted to go on record as saying that I'm... record as saying that I, I'm totally behind it, and I hope you, you support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frazier. Any other comments? Public hearing now close. You call for motion?
So moved.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. That the Board of Supervisors approve the ordinance to establish county meals tax as outlined. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So, yes.
If I could just clarify too, as part of that motion, we've set the effective date at October one, so we can work with the Commission of Revenue's Office. They've got a lot of paperwork and stuff to set up with the various restaurants in the community and the convenience stores. So I just wondered if anybody watching or listening, that, that will give us some additional time, and we also have an additional position in the Commission of Revenue's budget to help them with collecting not only this, but also the transient occupancy tax. So thank you for that.
Thank you for the amendment. The next public hearing, public dance hall ordinance, comprehensive amendment to the county's public dance hall ordinance to include moving the permit authority from the board to the county administrator, expanding the information that is required from the applicant, increasing the permit fee to cover the cost to the county for staff time and inspections. Sarah.
Yes, ma'am. Well, thank you for the summary. The only other, I'm going to say significant amendment that I would mention is that the proposed closing time, we noted in the review of numerous other locality ordinances, that many of them have the dance hall permit or the, dance hall operations cease at one AM. It's currently two AM, so we believe that may help the sheriff's office with winding things down at night. So the proposed ordinance and the current ordinance are enclosed behind the agenda summary. Another important point to note is that this ordinance does not apply to dances held for benevolent, charitable, or conducted under the auspices of religious, educational, civic, or military organizations. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the board members may have.
You say, "Close it down at one o'clock AM?"
Yes, sir. Currently, our current ordinance says two AM. So we've proposed one. The board certainly has the ability to-
Adjust the time.
-to adjust the time or anything else in the ordinance, I believe, as long as you make it less stringent, then it does not have to go back out for a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing now open for comments. Anybody to speak? So, can we entertain a motion?
What was the purpose, the reason for going from two to one?
We noted that many other jurisdictions had their dance hall operations cease at one AM. The dancing stops at one, the bar closes at one-thirty, the facility closes at two.
Here's, I've been impressed, every county, dance hall was still at the two o'clock in the morning. I'm sixty-three.
You can't handle them anymore.
Not no more.
Public hearing now closed. Intertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve, as, as presented. Put that way, for one o'clock.
Second.
Okay, it's been a, it's been a motion to put the one o'clock as closed and seconded. Ms. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Odessa, yes. So it is so moved. Public hearing closed. Okay, that's everything.
All right.
Okay, at this point, we move to appointments, citizen volunteer positions. Sarah.
Yes, ma'am. The positions listed, the terms of office expire June thirty, so we are asking the board to authorize the advertisement of these citizen volunteer vacancies, as outlined above, for appointment at the June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. So we'll advertise them and accept applications, and we'll present the applications to you at the June meeting.
I make a motion to authorize these positions.
I have a question first. I thought at the, last year, we decided that for the Poplar Hill Community Development Authority, we were going to change it from one year to two.
I'll have to check the, I, I, I don't remember that, but we can check the minutes.
I think I remember that, yeah.
Would that amendment-
I second, I second that with the, with, if it was in our minutes to change it to the two.
Right, yeah. Go back and research that.
We can take care of that.
If it is, just, I second that.
Okay, so it's been approved and seconded, and with that amendment. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David and Odessa. So moved and approved. Next, we will have appointments, Board of Supervisors position. Sarah.
Yes, ma'am. Also expiring on June thirty is the board's, Board Representative Appointment to the Virginia's Heartland Regional Industrial Facility Authority. So if Supervisor Townsend is willing to continue to serve, he would be eligible for reappointment.
I'm good. Jerry's willing to do it, I'm not forgetting.
Yes. I moved the rear front. Jerry?
He's been seven miles.
That's-
He's been two o'clock in the morning.
Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Probably getting ready to start.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Odessa, yes. Thank you so much. All right. Go Virginia Grant Cash Match Request.
I'll take this one, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
At the CRC meeting on April twenty, the attached summary outlined the Go Virginia Grant for the CRC Regional Economic Development Organization, or REDU. Business plan was presented by Melody Foster. She's worked on the application with Brian David and Liz Povar. The CRC will be sending out letters of request to each of the seven counties and Longwood University during May, requesting twenty-five-hundred in cash match and a commitment of in-kind match for their staff and appointed advisory committee members' time for the project. The CRC hopes to receive comments during May in preparation to submit the Go Virginia Grant in June. The CRC has approved movement forward with the grant and has committed ten thousand in cash towards the grant request. They will also be providing in-kind match as well to show the localities their commitment to the project. So project elements include a swat of strengths, weaknesses, analysis of their capabilities, the market demand analysis, site and building inventory analysis, board and operational structure design, including legal structure, vision goals and strategy framework, and budget, and financial stability plan for three years, including fundraising campaign framework. This is an extension of coming up with a, something to rebrand what was VGA. And for us, you know, as you know, a lot of the northern counties made the decision to pull out of the Virginia Growth Alliance and really felt, I think, we didn't see a return on the investment that you made in the organization. And I think it's been felt that through the CRC, we would see a, maybe something a little more local flavor to it. David, is that a good way to, to put it? So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We have, we have enough funding in our contingency line to cover this, but we've also got twenty-five thousand in next year's budget for whatever we end up going with as a, a possible match. Again, the board will have to make a decision down the road whether to be a partner or not, but at least if we can get this funding, that will allow, you know, for this effort to move forward.
Intertain a motion. I move that the Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors approve the twenty-five-hundred-dollar cash match request required for the Go Virginia Grant for the CRC Regional Economic Development Organization and business plan, and authorize the chairman to sign all necessary documents required.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So moved.
Next item, Madam Chair, is the Health Department's FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two locality agreement. The proposed agreement reflects the budget of one ninety-four, eight seventy-three in local matching funds, an additional twelve thousand, one hundred and thirteen in local funds left over from FY twenty-twenty-one. I know it really seems like a weird time of year to be approving a locality agreement when we've only got two months left in the year, but that's usually the way it works at the Health Department. So the fiscal year that ends this June thirty is covered by this agreement, so.
Intertain a motion.
So moved, it's over.
Second. Okay, it's moved and seconded that the Board of Supervisors approve the fiscal two thousand, twenty-one, twenty-two local locality agreement between Prince Edward County Board of Supervisors and the Virginia Department of Health for funding and services for the Prince Edward County Health Department as proposed. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa? Yes. So moved and approved. Okay, cannery operations, two thousand, twenty-two cans prices.
Yes, ma'am. This doesn't require action of the board, but we felt it was important enough just to call to your attention the impact of, I guess, increases on operations even as small as the cannery. So you will note that the cost of cans are increasing significantly in the coming year for our home canners. The, the twenty-twenty-one charge and then the twenty-twenty-two cost to the county, the proposed twenty-twenty-two charge for in-county and out-of-county, you will note that pint cans are going to go up about forty percent. Quart cans are going to go up about ninety percent in cost, and gallon cans are going to go up about forty-eight cents. Patty Gulick, the cannery manager, did obtain three quotes. So it's, there are significant increases. We wanted to be able to get this information out to the public in advance of the cannery season. Randy found out today that the new boiler will, will ship at the end of May, so we are hopeful that it will be installed, I believe, the week of June the sixth. So that'll be right in line with the start of the home canning season. So we just wanted to make the board aware, you may receive some expressions of concern from cannery users, but these are the costs to the county, and we felt like we needed to pass those along to the cannery users.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Next, the fiscal year twenty-two appropriations, Sheriff's Department, Crystal.
Cheryl's going to handle that.
Okay.
I think she's on her way here.
That's okay.
Good evening, board members. The first item for appropriations was for the Sheriff's Department. It says the Sheriff's Department has received two payments, one from VACOR in the amount of six thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars, ninety-seven cents, and another payment from Farm Bureau for eight thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-two cents for vehicle repairs. We're asking that the fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-nine cents be appropriated to the Sheriff's Department to cover the cost of repairs of vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
So we then seconded to approve the budget amendment presented. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So moved.
The second one we have is from the School Board. We received three requests from the Prince Edward County School, Public Schools, requesting an appropriation in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighteen cents to the school operating budget. These funds are a combination of federal, state, and CARES Act grant funds, and there's no local match for those funds appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded for approval. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So moved.
Thank you. The last item we have is further back in the agenda, but so I'm not coming back up here to talk. If I can just cover it, it would be great. It's about our health insurance plan. We've been-
It's on the table pack.
It is in the table pack.
Item twenty-five.
Correct. Doug and I have been working with Mary Jones out from One Digital, and she's given us seven different options for the county's health insurance for our county employees. The county administrator requested that One Digital provide renewal options to make the county more competitive, which she did provide. Our county current cost for family coverage is thirteen hundred and fifty-seven dollars for the Key Care five-hundred plan and twelve hundred and ninety-three dollars for the Key Care three-hundred plan, which ranges from three hundred to eight hundred higher per month in the employee share of the premium when compared to many of our neighboring localities. While we're competitive in salary, the benefits cost hurts our ability to recruit and retain employees. We saw a one-point-four percent increase this year, and the county administrator is requesting that we include an eight percent increase with the goal of shifting premiums to buy down the cost for this spouse-independent coverage. Option one, which is the standard renewal, so the rates would stay the same. Option two is a six percent increase. Option three is an eight percent increase. Option four is a ten percent increase, and options five through seven provide the same percentages, percent increases as two through four, but split the increases between the employee and the employer differently.
Did you say that the, the delegate recommended the eight percent?
He did.
And Supervisor, well, we initially included ten percent in the budget, so all of our initial budget numbers had ten. I think we can, by doing the eight, we still accomplish what we've been trying to do the last two years. We'll get, right now, save for the Key Care five-hundred, which is the lower of the two plans, it's seven hundred and thirty-two dollars for family coverage paid by the employee, that will go down to six hundred and twenty-two. That's another a hundred and ten dollars, or about thirteen hundred dollars in employee's pocket, Sheriff. And that's one of the things that Sheriff kind of challenged me on when I got here, was to try to get that reduced. And Sheriff, we were at over twelve hundred dollars a year ago for family coverage, so we've been able to make some significant strides and hopefully make us a little more competitive with people we compete for talent with.
This will take you down to how much?
So it'll go from seven thirty-two to six twenty-two. So that's how much the, the individual will pay.
And it was twelve hundred.
It was twelve hundred.
That's for the three, the five-hundred or the three-hundred?
The five-hundred plan. Three-hundred plan will go from eight forty-seven to seven sixty-two. That's about eighty-five dollars cheaper.
I move we do the eight percent. Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded that the Board of Supervisors approve the selection of option three as a county's health insurance premium of this year, two twenty through to twenty-third. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes, it's so moved and approved. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we will have our county attorney's report, Ms. Terry Atkins Wilson. Jerry?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Odessa, yes. So moved and approved. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we will have our county attorney's report. Ms. Terry Atkins Wilson.
Glad to see everybody. As you have seen, we've been working on some of the ordinances. Like I said, Doug's got a good plan for trying to, to update our ordinances and get them all in line with the current Virginia code and keep those up to date. Active with the, with the IDA, we're working on some projects there. Anyway, everything seems to be flowing along. I did attend the Local Government Attorney Conference in Harrisonburg last month, and that was very rewarding to meet a lot of these ladies and gentlemen, attorneys that from other areas, to brainstorm with them, and folks that I deal with via email, to put a face with those folks. And a lot of them have been working on other projects here in, in Prince Edward, and it's good to, to, you know, to meet those people and to socialize and had some good conferences. We had a solar conference that was good, and anyway, some CLE as well. So anybody have any questions or concerns for me?
If I have any comments or questions? No? Thanks, Karen.
All righty. Thank y'all.
Next, committee reports, Fire EMS Committee.
So the Fire EMS Committee met this evening, and after discussion, they have tabled what they were working on, so they'll be back next month to present that, that findings and appropriations for you, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you much.
Madam Chair, if you can go back and pick me up at 19:00, I've got just a couple quick things for you.
Sure.
I appreciate the board's action on the memorandum of understanding tonight.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry I admitted that.
No, no, you're fine. I'm sliding back. It's all good. With the Department of General Services, that's going to provide a level of commitment from the state, which will hopefully allow us to move forward an interim agreement on the project. Last week, and I noted in my report last week to you, we've applied for two grants through the Virginia Department of Health Office of Drinking Water. We hope that will be a successful application. I really want to thank Melody Foster and Todd Fortune at the Commission for really helping us out with that. We also had a meeting with the Department of Environmental Quality regarding water withdrawal permit, and DEQ has committed that they're shooting for approval of the permit by the end of 2022, which is much faster than we initially thought. Commonwealth Transportation Board Hearing, CDB had their hearing in Lynchburg last Tuesday. Funding for the County Revenue Sharing Project for Manor House Road, Turn Lane Project, an amount of $325,927 was on, in the plan. Of course, we've also applied for a smart scale application for that, which would be 100% state-funded. And also the Farm River, Farmville River Walk Phase 1, which wraps around downtown along the Appomattox River. Funding for that in an amount of $859,736 was included in the draft plan. I know Supervisor Will, we had talked about that. I know the folks at Greenfront are really excited about that project. The Connects Broadband Loan, that loan that was brokered through the IDA for the Connects Broadband Project is scheduled to close this week. It's been a long time coming. That's going to really help funding for that project as well. The Tobacco Commission, at its meeting on May 11th this week, will consider funding requests for $530,100 for the water tank project for the hit park. Matching funds will come from our Business Ready Sites Program award that we received back in January from the governor. And the last thing there, the Prince Edward County Industrial Park, Terry's been working on the closing agreement on the right of way with Tribe Borough. We hope to finalize that in the next week, and we'll be ready to go out to bid on that project. Last thing, Madam Chair, and you asked me to bring this up. The, during the budget discussion on May 3rd, we level funded a lot of our outside agencies. One of the agencies was Faces, and part of their request was an increase, they're looking to build a sign for their property. It would be a monument sign, and that was included in their budget request. It's a masonry sign, but the, the actual sign itself inside the masonry pillars, but the cost for the sign that they had projected out was $8,058.70. And I know you had a call, Madam Chair, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. I don't know whether you want to act on it or do we consider that, but I told Paul that we had reduced their request down to level funding.
Right. And I received a call from Ms. Joanna Baker this morning, and they need signage, and because they're basically a commercial, they have people that have not been able to find their building because of the little sign that sticks in there or whatever. So they need the official monument signing, and Mr. Stanley had talked with her also. And I would like for us to consider giving this the amount, because Faces covers the needs of so many people from Prince Edward County. So I would like for it to be considered. Do you need a motion? Yes, I would, yeah. So moved.
Second.
Okay, so moved and second that we submit the amount for their signage. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
The signage plus the level funding?
That would be in my understanding, Supervisor Gill.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?
No.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes.
David?
No.
Okay. So that, that is moved. Thank you. Anything else? Mrs. Stanley, anything else you have to add?
I don't have anything else you've got in your table pack review of the board. Malice Report is in there, and a tourism report.
And one other thing, item number 22, about an upcoming conference that's in Roanoke, Virginia, August 18th, VACORE. I serve in the Education Committee, so I know I'll be going, and I'll contact you later, Karen, about that. Thank you.
Is anybody else on the committee?
Yeah, I am, in general.
Just let Karen know if you can go.
Okay. I have one other question, Mr. Stanley. On May 17th-
We have a joint public hearing, 7:00 p.m. with Planning Commission.
Right. So at this point, will we recess until that time?
No, we've already, we've already set that public hearing, so we're set.
Okay. So just a reminder to board members, we have a joint committee meeting with the Planning Commission, 7:00, May 17th.
And I will, I know it's a, an off-night meeting, I'll try to call you guys, everybody don't-
Get right here.
Yes.
Because the next thing you got listed here is the 31st. We're going to have one through 17.
17th.
Right.
And I guess the other reminder, I know tomorrow's Paver's kind of open house and cookout. Anyone who was able to go attend that-
And that begins 5:00.
5:00, this man.
So, do I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's motion and second that we adjourn. Patty?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Bobby?